Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Please your day, please lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and the two powerful states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Commissioner Beulah, Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Rubes.
Here.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Speaker.
Here.
Commissioner Terry.
Here. On the minutes, we were just talking about, we don't have time to go through them today.
Okay.
So if everybody's comfortable, could we hold the minutes over till the next meeting?
Yeah. Got it.
The roll goes over. No courtesies, no proclamations, board and commission reports. Speaker Robertson, do you have any other things to report?
One thing that maybe I'll bring to the TIF TED Board was discussed this morning. And so the TIF TED Board is exploring the idea because there has been some question about potential of projects to the east and south of the current TIF district. Whether or not it would be wise to consider another TIF district or south on First as an example and out further east on Main Street to serve us that region. Preliminary discussion at this morning's meeting, I said I would mention it here this evening and sort of be looking for some feedback on whether this commissioner likes the idea of considering something like it.
So they go right down the border is first?
Holly hasn't heard it, so she can't tell.
Well, and I will say that the one thing that has to be considered is it has to be within one jurisdiction, so it would already have to be incorporated in the city limits. So...
So it would limit it to the edge of the city limits?
Correct. So right now, the TIF district goes up to High Street on East Main, and that's kind of where it stops. Pretty narrow through there. I think it maybe goes to Boulevard and then kind of follows the railroad corridor, both directions, north and south, goes south basically to Third Avenue. So I don't see anything on south of town that would be in that, that would be wise to do, because I think it's, everything's pretty much incorporated unless you get pretty far west. But we could talk and look at that.
But east would work better.
East, again, it's got to be inside the city limits, but there's a lot of potential from High Street to the edge of the city limits now.
That was the biggest concern, because you'll recall, you should have some kind of all that's involved.
High Street?
High Street, could there be, not that it would encompass that specific development, but is there an opportunity to use some TIF grantings down the road to improve infrastructure and improve eastern?
I will tell you that it has been discussed as a tool potentially for Berg Lumber or some of those developments more to the north. And again, you have to identify blights, you have to, and the percentage of our tax base that's already within the TIF district is higher than most. But also, again, now we need basically agreement from the county and the school district. And I have not chatted with the school district, the superintendent that's currently there, so I don't know what their stance is, but I can tell you that the county would be interested in kind of some dispersment, so not, maybe not a full recapture of that increment.
So it's just a topic of discussion this year?
Commissioner Rubes?
Nope, nothing at this time.
Right. Is your day?
I do have work, so we...
She's still kind of...
It's crazy. I'm lucky enough to tour the civic center tonight, and so I'm going to hopefully skip well over. Can you hear me okay?
I had to tell you, that civic center is the cleanest night ever. I was like, I was...
Impressed, yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying anything, I just, Billy isn't that one of them. Looks amazing.
Do I need to tap this on?
If they can hear you?
Can you hear me okay?
I hear you, all right.
We can.
Okay, so a presentation was made by the library director, Elizabeth Walms. The library staff would like to bring back the story walk concept on the city trails. In the past, this has been done, this yardage, yard signs, making it a temporary project. They are presenting it as having an option for a more permanent frame to exist year round. Speak and Manufacturing has agreed to build, sponsor, and install these frames as part of their day of service. The signs will have a permanent install in 2024 where requested. It was discussed that the frames could be powder coated to lessen the need for future maintenance. Labor could be done to make the installation easier by having post holes dug and prepped. The idea is to change the story out monthly. The frames would also allow for information panels to be posted along with the story for education and trail information. Speaker would like this to be done as their day of service, which happens in September.
This Thursday.
This Thursday. Locations of the frames were also discussed. It was strongly cautioned to the board to not have them placed along the Frog Palm Trail area in efforts to preserve the environment. A motion was made and that passed and approved that this idea will be presented back to the board soon. Board members were asked to send all comments and ideas to the Parking Rec Director for consideration, and the library would like to submit a list of books each season to the Parking Rec Board for approval before posting stories to the public within the community. As far as the pool goes, the winterization of the pool saw some water leakage, and it was an expensive project. Some valves were replaced and it was refilled. Cory Birdwell and Katie Venwell were of great help with the project. The water leaks were most likely water pushing into the ground. The pool tarps are in bad condition. Something needs to be addressed as they are dated and holding water. The current tarps were purchased in 2014 for $20,000. They have a 10-year life. They are very difficult to roll out and in. Also, the vacuum system is in need of replacement. It is costing the city a large amount of time and payroll as it's very consuming and not as effective compared to newer models. There are more efficient systems out there and an estimated cost of $3,000 to $4,000 to have a new vacuum system put in. A robotic system would be more effective for the walls and the safety of the staff and tune maybe needed. Kelly Comer suggested we put the pool tarps thing back on the capital improvement list. Mary Capler presented the closing report for the pool business. It will be forwarded to the board for review. Highlights were that the Friends of the Pool encouraged the city to retain the pool manager for the 2025 season as soon as possible. Past successful seasons ran with two to three managers. And ideas for having college interns were discussed. The board was also asked to consider new ways to staff and consider wage, increasing wages, opportunities, and creative hiring. This summer, there are 400 kids taking lessons. It was urged that more adults are needed to staff the lessons and hours of operation. June 1st to 31st is standard for pool use. We suggested that News Argus could put a press release for staffing interests and needs, and the Parking Rec Board will review the closing report from the Friends of the Pool online for the next sessions to be held. Discussion in lieu to the snack shack demo. The demo has become, began with Peak Electric did the disconnection of power. Rick Sandow did some cleaning and clearing out of materials. Public Works is on board, and there's some saw that needs to be cleared out. Ryan Durbin is doing the concrete work, and Lisa is looking at having a contractor to help oversee the project. Lisa asked in the skating association. Ross Richer is the point managing for Recreation District Funds for the supplies, and Glodore is doing 10% under cost for the needed materials and supplies. Board member Josh Stoychoff would like to see a separate tree board implemented. He also communicated the need for one, and that it would be helpful to access more grants and funding. Josh also communicated he has potential members interested. It was noted that Trails of Ales is looking for more volunteers, but that is over now. There are two trees already paid for at Crings for the downtown district. There is still a need for full-time staff employment at the Civic Center. It's currently an $18 an hour rate of pay. Fall will bring extended hours. 130 kids have signed up for new soccer. I am in flag football, had 135 kids that participated. And as we found out tonight, the Civic Center is looking to implement Glode Art Gage Ball and Parents Night Out. They would like to provide more activities for the community, and the new gym at Lewis Park will take a great pressure of scheduling and staffing off the Civic Center. Friends of the Trails will pay up to $1,500 for a new mower. And discussion was held on what the new mowers that we have now are used for. And then just to follow up.
Yeah. On the story walk, did they decide where they would listen to?
As far as I know, the motion was to, for them to do along Main, anywhere between Main Street and Brassy along the trail. But at that time when we had our meeting, we were supposed to wait, but we all gave emails and comments and suggestions to how. But I do know they've...
I don't, I have not seen a solid location. I know Speaker has provided the design and stuff like that. So it's progressing, and we have a Google Doc that we're all able to access.
Nice. They moved us pretty, like, from, that he did not want to see it down on the Frog Palm area, it's just to be able to make it one.
And it's more native, I mean, kind of natural down there. And they thought it would be a safe location even for the younger kids to kind of stop. Either beginning or starting towards the library.
That's why, I guess, asking, I was just curious if it was, if they weren't going to the Frog Palm's.
That was kind of our thoughts.
I'm not sure. Katie might know if a place he's been determined yet. I didn't think that it was, but I'm sure that he could if he had ideas or suggestions. They'd also, we would probably have...
Have all the ideas.
Good ideas.
And then just, I know this was kind of, I think it was a big meeting, and that was almost everything, I think just the highlights of it. The other thing I just wanted to bring back to discussion because of the fact that Friends of the Trail made a presentation to the commission in our last meeting, meeting before maybe, but there were some things, I did attend the Friends of the Trail meeting, they met on September 9th, and it was a pretty lengthy meeting, a lot of good notes were taken, but the highlighted points that they asked specifically to be addressed to the commission includes the following. They just wanted the status of the flashing beacons, how to get water at the Turner Center, what's happening with the balance of the Frog Poms, and then of course the question which I've already asked Holly about, they want to know how the mower purchase is happening, whether we're getting a match or whether they're providing up to a certain amount of funds. Also, they wanted to communicate, communicated that the Friends of the Trail would like to organize a partnership with the city for needed bridge repairs. They're looking to support these efforts. As far as any efforts with the trails, they're happy to volunteer wherever possible, they just feel like they need more expertise to know how to proceed. They also would like to be brought into a room with the approved story walk concept, which I've already addressed. And then regarding the water to the Turner Center, they had a specific question if that was part of the bid award that the commission voted on with Griffith Construction, because a motion was made that they would match the city with the install of the line, which was estimated at $7,400.
Correct. No, that was not part of any action. Yep, that's a separate.
They did make a motion at that meeting there, just so you're aware.
I have been communicating with Kevin, so...
And then also, they wanted the commission to know that they updated their bylaws, and they are now moving forward with their fall fund drive due to the projects that have been moved forward since everything was brought to the commission. So that's happening. And they would also like to help with the snail efforts. And I don't know what's on the radar for commission to behold, but maybe in the future we can have Friends of the Trail come and present what they do or what they have.
It took me a second, I was like, yes.
Yes.
I don't know that...
What are those snails called?
Eastern Heath snails. So I don't know that they need a whole lot of help. I believe that Public Works is partnering with the Fire Department and the Conservation District to do some activities in the next couple of weeks, so...
I told them to call Danny Hewitt, because she gave us such a great...
The Conservation District is kind of the point people on it.
And I think the newspaper had an article that they were doing, an article on it, that they had an upcoming meeting on it that they would...
Yep, they had a public meeting while we, while I was out of town, I know, and there was about 25 people. I think you did an article, didn't you?
Yeah, we did a preview story, and sorry, for the record, we'll have a story in on Wednesday about the news.
I think there was about 25 people in attendance, and about 20 of them were at the previous meeting, so five public members are interested, yep.
See, that's just the feedback from both Friends of the Trail for just this time.
I appreciate you going to that meeting.
Yeah, I think it was...
Did you happen to encourage them to come to Parks and Rec?
Yes, I did.
I figured you probably...
Yes, I have a lot of kind things to say.
You're letting it out?
Yes, yeah, and just bring those concerns to...
So do you have this list, so that you're aware?
I do not have the list. She shared it with me just visually, but...
And I, like, literally, I'm going to turn this into Nikki, but I, like, I think there were a lot of notes, but I just took the highlights that I self-pertained to, what was brought forward before the commission and what we felt. I was happy to see that their fund drive, that they were excited about going back out for that, so, so that, that was something that...
And before I left, we had gotten numbers from Griffith, so that was reported. Public Works is still going to see if they directly purchase some of the materials, if they could get some cost savings and stuff like that. So we're not ready to move forward, plus we did not budget for water at the Turner Center. And so while they have offered that, we don't currently have it in our budget to put water in there. And the flashing beacons and maybe something else, probably the trail paving that we move forward with that were the three things that were communicated.
And then also, just on that bid, the bid that we approved, and if there was a shortfall in the funding, we'll just figure it out.
We budgeted $10,000 in the budget we approved. It was previously there.
That quarter capital, including to use it?
That's where it is, yep.
Exactly, that's where it's at.
Yep, in the trails, yep.
So that's budgeted, that would be something to share with that part of...
And they didn't ask about the additional funding, did they?
No. No, I just, I see that as...
The next question?
And now that I think about it too, they mentioned that the city was hosting meetings the first week of October, they wanted to do some touring out by the Turner Center.
So that is the planning, the planning conference, the Montana Association of Planners will be in town doing their annual conference here. Kellyanne is the keynote speaker. And then we'll have, there's, the Lewistown Plan is part of the presentation. There's a lot of state agencies, planning professionals, and communities that will be in town. But part of the activities is biking or walking type activities along the trail system, and I know Doug and some of the planning committees had reached out to the trails and to the recreation. And I think I even offered to, like, man a booth where we could do some informational stuff on, you know, our walking tours or maybe our animals or plant life along the trail system.
So not the time to do the hunting series.
We won't be doing that that day.
It's a little early in the month.
Wait a month.
Anyway, I hope that was helpful, and you know, I'm going to thank you for your job.
Commissioner Speaker? Nothing to report? Okay, I have nothing to report except, next Central Montana Foundation meeting is September 24th, that's two years. All right. Any other comments on the board stuff?
Excuse me?
I just got something to say. City manager report?
I did not do a city manager report. This is my first day back in the office, so I have many things to sort through, but I did pass out a couple of things. So there is the performance evaluation. Our plan is to do that the second meeting in October, but I wanted to get that out ahead of time so you have plenty of time to fill it out and come prepared. And the other thing I handed out was the color copies of our land use plan. So we are starting the public hearings. There's copies available at the library and the county planning office as well as the city office for the public. And on Wednesday, the Planning Commission will make their recommendation. On Thursday, we're hoping to get a recommendation from the City County Planning Board. Both of those will have public hearings, and then the county commissioners later in the month. Be prepared, that's coming to you guys on the 7th of October.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention on the performance evaluation, so this is probably mostly for Tim because he hasn't done it yet, but this is something that we do ahead of time, each commissioner does ahead of time, and then bringing how during the committee of the whole, close, it'll just be a private meeting with Holly from the 6 to 7 period on the 21st of October. So from 6 to 7 during the committee of the whole on that day, and we will do the performance evaluation. And then this little thing, I'm just going to show you how it works. You have to look at it like this, so you have to look at it like this, because I'm doing this for Nikki's sake, and then you turn the pages like this, so it's not upside down. It looks like, but you have to turn the pages like this.
Upside down, yeah.
It's bound at the top.
Yep.
So if you're going through it, you're like...
Flop it over and go the other way.
You can do that too.
You'd be really confused then.
I figured it right out.
Good job.
Good job, thank you, thank you.
Well, we did it, because we were like, this is all upside down.
Everybody's been telling me that.
All right. Anything on those two items? Okay, public comment. This is on non-agenda items as we always do. Is there anybody who has public comment other than Cory? Just wanted, anybody have anything to say? Okay, so I asked Cory Williamson, who is the senior outreach for Dana Shore, she is herself for American Prairie. She's in Lewistown, she lives in Lewistown, and in light of what happened on the morning of Choke Cherry for their group, which was the pamphlets and whatnot home around town, and then also, there's been a lot of rumor and speculation of what exactly had happened and stuff, and she's going to give the commission information from the American Prairie side, but also what they have found out through the Montana Human Rights and stuff, so Cory, let's turn it over to you.
Thanks, Kellyanne. Again, I'm Cory Williamson.
Could you use a microphone, please?
Yeah. She can have mine.
Yeah, I'll bring this in.
And it needs to be like up in your mouth. Okay.
Like, right there.
How's that? Well?
Nope.
You almost have it. Yeah, I mean, like, in your mouth. I'll pull the personal with it, okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you talk louder?
I can talk loud.
That's what I like.
I can just be loud, I don't know.
There you go.
Through the speakers and the screen.
Yeah, I mean, and I, again, my name is Cory Williamson, I'm American Prairie Senior Outreach Manager. I live here in Lewistown, I work at the Discovery Center. My colleague Garrett Buds is with me. Garrett is our Chief Conservation Officer, who lives here in Fergus County but out on the PN. And we really just wanted to come tonight and check in with the commission, and I know that the commissioners have been getting calls and emails, and there's a lot of curiosity in the community. The News Argus piece that came out this weekend was really excellent, and I think it's covered very well what we have learned, which has come primarily from the Montana Human Rights Network and their monitoring of the White Lives Matter Montana group. Oh, there's the mic. Okay. And again, I think that that piece really did a nice job of just identifying what Montana Human Rights Network knows about that entity, the kind of acts that they've seen that group commit elsewhere, kind of their little information about their motivations of membership was encapsulated in that article as well. And so really what, what we wanted to do was just check in with the commissioners and see if we can be supportive of you and answering questions from the community, if there are people in the community here tonight that wanted to visit with us. Again, I think a lot of what was presented in that piece is extremely accurate and represents what we know and what we have learned through the information gathering from the Montana Human Rights Network that does monitor that group as a known hate group in Montana. So again, I think I'd have you answer questions now after the meeting or just to hear from you all in a way that would help you support the questions that you're getting from the community, and certainly we are fielding those as well, and obviously most focused right now on the safety and wellbeing of our staff and our community here. So just so commissioners all understand, if you read the article in the newspaper, you know what's, what's happening.
Some kind of a white supremacist hate group?
Yeah, that's, that's it, that's the one. So I guess my question for you Cory would be, it has been an unidentified group and not, there was some concern that it was members of Lewistown or at least like had come from Lewistown, there was a lot of rumors flying around, so at this point, and the article did a great job of, of just declaring that these are people, a melting group that is mostly outside of Lewistown as far as we know. That's our understanding and the Montana Human Rights Network's understanding, so there are members identified in this group who largely live in the western part of the state, so there are a very small number of known named individuals. They monitor those groups, they have photographed some of those individuals. We, we can't know if there were supporters or folks from this community who took part in that act, but our understanding through Montana Human Rights Network is that those folks don't live in our community. And the feedback that we got from the community on the morning of Choke Cherry was really positive and really encouraging, and I appreciated that very much. I don't think that that is reflective of Lewistown.
Do they know if this group has been in existence for a while or if it's just recent?
They have been in existence for a while, and they're, not that you should spend your precious time Googling them, but there is some information out there about some of the other activities that this group has engaged in around the state, so they have done similar things in Great Falls, in Livingston, a lot of their activities look like this, where they kind of show up undercover, dark, and lead stickers, lead posters, graffiti. They're going to protest pride parades and outside of synagogues and that kind of thing. And that's, that's sort of the majority of activities that they've been identified with. Do you have any questions for Cory?
Is the Discovery Center opening up again soon?
Garrett, do you want to speak to that? I'm just back from some time off.
Hi, again, Garrett Buds, Vice President and Chief Conservation Officer for American Prairie. We did close the Discovery Center temporarily just out of an abundance of caution for staff and their safety, not in direct response to any particular act or information, so we just wanted to operate with the abundance of caution. It's sort of a moving target at this moment. It's closed this week, and we're really taking it day by day at the moment, and I don't have an answer for you as to when we are going to reopen. The idea is not to stay closed too terribly long, but we want to make sure that staff is safe and that we feel comfortable opening it up into the public. So, you know, as we receive additional information from the Montana Human Rights Network and law enforcement and others, we'll come make that call, obviously, to...
I should comment to, to the commission that the police have obviously been informed both the sheriff's office and our own Lewistown Police Department, and are working to, you know, just kind of get a grasp of this. There might be some movement. There might be some movement forward on the charge of littering in Louis Towne. But just so everybody knows, that all the parties that are working together to, you know, make sure that this is not something that happens, especially to members of our community. I think, Tim, if you want to at this time, if you want. I don't want to wait to end the meeting.
You want to keep this topic or you want...
Yeah, let's, let's...
I was gonna give a statement later, but I'll give a statement now.
I think it would be good now since we're all...
So this is kind of jumping to the end of our agenda. Normally, there's a commissioners' minute, so I'll take mine now.
No, I think we're just a nice, you know, little intimate group that we...
Well, I just want to read this and I would hope that the rest of the commissioners would too, it's a way. Hate speech and bigotry have no place in Louis Towne, Montana. None. It is not who we are, it is not what we stand for, and it should not and and we should not and do not stand for. I have heard universally that the citizens of Louis Towne do not appreciate some unwanted outsiders coming to our town, littering our yards, and spreading hate and oppression under the premise that they somehow know something about the issues in our community. I have good friends on both sides of the Save the Cowboyway, American Prairie topic. If there's one thing that both sides have clearly shown, it is that this is a civil disagreement that has not and will not include bigotry, anti-Semitism, and hate speech in Louis Towne. Additionally, the hatred and actions of this small group of out-of-town racists have cost our local businesses many thousands of dollars in loss revenue this week, caused our citizens fear and frustration, and brought nothing but negative outcomes to Louis Towne. I'll say it again, hate speech and bigotry have no place in Louis Towne, Montana.
I second that.
You know, we talked about, well, in my mind, I've been talking to all of you, but, you know, I think it's good to have a statement or a stance that we're doing without giving this group too much leverage and stuff. But I would like to share with that comment that we had talked about. I haven't talked to Holly about this, but Tim and I have kind of talked about it. And Lorraine and I talked about it too, and I never went to do it in my paper. But the idea of if we can somehow get this group on a littering charge of some kind, because, you know, they're claiming, they're claiming ownership of it was a lot. And just, it's taking and stuff of everything. So hopefully, that's something that we are able to move forward with our police officers. And I believe that that was an area that they were looking at.
I'll have some discussions with both law enforcement and our attorney on taking some sort of action there.
So at least that's something to say, you know, that we just don't appreciate it. It's, but, stay away. So I think that Tim's statement was a good one. It sounds like it could be a motion and we're on seconding it. So I think that we can say that that's our statement.
Okay.
And if everyone's open with that.
Aye.
So if you're in favor of, obviously, what Tim has talked about, what Cory has shared with us, and just like our unity of community...
And we can get a copy of that?
Yeah. If you would please raise your right, raise your right hand.
Which is kind of what?
Raise your right hand if you agree with this statement. I don't think anyone ever got that.
Got what?
I know you got it.
What is that?
The letter from Rachel Comer.
I know.
That was a letter sent...
I think, didn't you email everyone?
I did not get that.
I received several letters. And I received several phone calls.
I, the, she tried to send it to the city email and it blocked her.
I got it.
I did not.
I think Lorraine forwarded it to you and I. Oh, offer your personal one? I'll forward it to all of you guys so you have a copy of it.
And then along with the other, hopefully, the Ray got the other, all of us going to the rental company.
For the who?
The rental company.
If you will share that with me, I did not see that. I didn't see it either.
Well, good for my way. My, I got 50%. So I don't know who else was trying to send letters, but our email might be the...
But you get all the ones asking for my emergent, you know, send money. What are you up to again?
I just want to make a comment that I hope that American Prairie feels supported by our city. Like that's, that's a big thing for us. It was heartbreaking to be here, what had happened. And I know individually, all of us, you know, on that in retrospect, but I'm also very, very appreciative that you were able to come to write and make those comments and share with us and keep us in the loop of what's happening at the center.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for statement. And that feels much more like the community in the Louis Towne I know. So thank you. And obviously, we're here and we may, we may not be in the center again this week, but we're around, we're up here and available if there are more questions or if we can share anything more than, you know, so thank you. Is there any other comments on this topic? Any other comments? Yeah, I mean...
Commissioner Robertson, thank you for your well thought out comments. I appreciate it. And I would acknowledge those things too. There's a place for free speech. This is not a hate speech can't be allowed, especially threats. We appreciate you guys.
Exactly. Got all that, thank you?
Yep.
Statement?
Yes.
And then hopefully, we'll just find him a bunch of money for... Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have two consent agendas tonight for claims from August 16th to August 31st and then the claims from September 1st to September 16th. So does anyone have any questions on those? Make sure you say which one you're agreeing to. Okay, commissioner, you ready?
Um, I'm... Uh, I remember one...
There's an August one and a September one. I think it says on the top.
Really?
But I wrote, I wrote the notes. Uh, okay, on the nine, nine, the September one.
Okay.
Page three and four. Can I just have a question? As to how do you rectify the Polish furniture? Um, you know, there's like 55774.
55.
It's on page three.
Page three. Rectification of that.
Yeah, it's the October, August one.
The August one, oh, okay.
August, okay. Griffin contract. Okay.
So you had not ruled the new budget, had you? What, where, I can't bear where we're at. I'm sorry. Oh, I mean, we flat, I looked it up. We flat did not budget enough money. So we're gonna have to go, I'm in, what?
So there's the answer.
I went, I went looked because it really bothered me. And these are all those fixes and stuff, so I'm gonna have to visit with Holly a little bit. And we may end up bringing back a budget amendment. These were just unforeseen circumstances.
Because that was the water break, right?
Leaks, some of them, the leaks when we were working on the... Water tank. Water tank.
And then on the September one, on the, well, it's the same thing as this to how you rectify. And it's on page 910.
Okay.
Advanced electric. 55912. That's number 11. And then triactive USA fitness equipment. And that would be the...
Okay, but the, the advanced electric, again, this is that work on that million gallon tank. That might not even be in the right spot. Because that might be part of the contract. Don't know, I'll have to check on that.
Page nine.
And then on page nine...
It's eight, actually page 10.
Yeah, find it.
Page 10 would be the 55812.
So what this is, we have received, the expression swing was one of them.
Right.
That the Central Montana Foundation paid for. And then this is the equipment that Rachel Comer is doing for her Eagle Scout. And this has all been approved through the park board. And I got the money for it and I'm putting it in this other account, but we didn't quite have the proper line items created. So we are going to work to refine this budget this year.
Okay. It catches, right?
I think that's it. I just, like I say, I was, you know, I often wondered how you rectify, you know, all this. And this, this has minimal...
Well, towards the end, you're, you know, in June and Jul, or May and July, May and June, you're gonna have a lot because we're just flat.
Coverage.
Yeah, and as long as the object codes are okay, it's the bottom line.
Okay.
And so we always encourage our department heads to code it where they're supposed to so that it is a learning tool for the following years, so.
Page for September, I'll leave, page two. Just information on 55835. Michael Curran.
So this gentleman made payments to Louis Towne, Maine.
Maine.
Online. Online.
All right.
To Louis Town, Louis Ton, Maine. We have, when it comes in...
In the state?
The Maine, the state. It happens more times than you would know. There's many Louis Towns.
Okay.
And when I receive that, there's no way to contact people. There's no account number, there's no address, there's no phone number, nothing. So I just put it into account and he called me the other day and asked for his money. So I'm going to return his money. I don't know what else. It is, and he thought, he only remembers two of them. And I went back and have documentation for three. So that is why I am, that gentleman is getting money.
We sometimes get at the hotels, people are like, I'm just trying to book a Louis Towne, Louis Towne.
Oh, yeah, I guess, there's Pennsylvania, Maine.
Pennsylvania, yeah.
Illinois. Illinois, Missouri.
Because there's a Louis Towne, a lot of that in Louis Towne.
Illinois. Missouri or Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania, yeah, we get that one too.
Perhaps you could suggest that come pick it up first.
No, I could do that. Yeah, I could tell him that. And well, because bill, their water bills are delinquent. And they can't figure out where it went. You know, I don't get it. That's what he said. He goes, I just got a call and I have to pay my water bill. I'm like, well, figured you'd figure that out before now, but okay. I think so. Yeah, they go in, so when he went online, he pays online and he wasn't watching, that it wasn't, it wasn't Maine, it was Montana. No.
Because M E M T, that's where it is?
Right next to it, yeah. Yeah.
I just...
Correct, alphabetically.
Well, do you want to, are, is there any questions on the claims? Just, you know, want to make a look on the claims as corrected or as they will be corrected? As they will be filed, I think, and...
Move to approve the claims. I'm going to put the press.
It's been, I'm gonna give it to Diane because she called that. Alright, it's been moved by Commissioner, uh, Robertson, seconded by Commissioner Hewitt to approve both sets of claims. Always a favor, please raise your hand. Now moving on to the regular agenda. Discussion and action on resolution number 4170, resolution approving an application from First Presbyterian Church for TIF funds made to Louis Towne Tax Incriminating Board.
Yes, so I passed out the resolution and there's some information on that. And so just this morning, the TIF board did discuss this and recommended approving a grant for the First Presbyterian Church for a portion of fencing and landscaping that is directly related to their additional partnership with a preschool that's housed in their building. And so the grant is, again, a one-to-one match for the amount up to $6,210.
The math on this is a little difficult. However, if you were to look at this project cost worksheet with the final amount of $12,962, you would see that that amount, half of that would be $6,481. They don't need that much, they didn't get that much. They could have asked for a little more. So there isn't a direct, you're not seeing exactly 50%.
And again, once the bills come in, we only reimburse on 50% of what is eligible.
Right.
So it's an up to amount.
This is a good project. I just have been finding lots of good projects. This is a good project.
It is a good project. If, I would point out that it's not that exact profitable, we would like that.
Um, it is not for profit and so they do not pay taxes. They pay just the assessments.
Right. However, we talked about that TIF board, we're so eligible and, you know, but as much as childcare is critical in our career right now, it's such a shortage. It's important to support it because it supports businesses downtown and supports people downtown.
Yeah, beautification too, which is a little weird. Good job, TIF. Do I have a motion? Sound good for resolution 4170. I'll second it. It's been moved by Commissioner Speka, seconded by Commissioner Day to approve resolution number 4170. Is there any comments from the public?
Would that come in favor to the left?
Any other comments from commissioners? Two roll call votes since this is a resolution.
Alright, we are making a motion to approve resolution number 4170, approving an application from First Presbyterian Church for TIF funds made to the Louis Towne Tax Incriminating Board in the amount of up to $6,210. Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Rubes.
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson.
Aye.
Commissioner Speka.
Aye.
Commissioner Terry.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, looks like Joe Ward wants a new vehicle.
Yes.
Well, not a new vehicle.
Not a new one.
New to him vehicle.
New to him vehicle.
And so this is something we budgeted for, have been discussing for some time. And so we were able to get several quotes from local vendors. Again, based on condition and mileage, it has been determined that their preferred vehicle is a 2021 Ford Edge that is available from Courtesy.
So this one is in the budget, is this? Is there any comments on this?
On move that we approve the purchase of a 2021 Ford Edge from Courtesy Motor Incorporated in the amount of $27,980 for the building inspector.
Approve that second. It's been moved by Commissioner Day, seconded by Commissioner Hewitt. Is there any comments from the public?
So which vendor got the bid?
Courtesy.
Gotcha.
Any comments from commissioners? Okay, let's do a roll call vote on this one.
Okay, we are approving a 2021 Ford Edge in the amount of $27,980.
Now wait a minute.
Well, it says on here.
It's an Acadia.
No, 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 no.
They submitted two proposals.
They submitted two and the Acadia had thirty-six thousand miles on it and they were gonna sell it to us for thirty-one.
Thirty-three thousand.
And so then they decided to go with the um, Ford Edge at the top for twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay.
Which is what the motion was for, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, and it's from Courtesy Motors.
Should be either of you.
I had, if they put it on hold, kind of. Alright, Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaka?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye, thank you. Okay, last but not least, we have this business license for LG Electric. Um, as you all know, we member, we do all electric, um, H back and front licenses for the city commission. You want to tell us about LG?
Yep, and so this company uh, came into town to do some work with a solar panel installer that was doing some residential solar panels. And so again, as Commissioner Terry pointed out, you guys have to make those approval. Uh, we got all of the documentation. You can see the liability insurance and bond and all of that. So all of the other information has been provided to the city office.
Ever, this is like off, off topic-ish, but is it ever possible to change our rules so we don't have to? Like, if it, if you, if it filled out and you guys say it's good?
We would have to change the ordinance, but yes, that is one of them that is on our list of possible updates.
So what was the purpose of putting those in ordinance for funding?
It's back from like the forties, I think when maybe they were concerned about quality of workmanship?
Or maybe it was a little harder to get back then to get documentation to make sure we stayed on it. Now my staff will contact the insurance company directly and we get it, you know, we get it pretty promptly, so.
With emails and stuff, it's a much more streamlined process too, so.
I would, yeah, maybe to approve a business license, that would be like it.
I'll second. It's been moved by Commissioner Speaka, seconded by Commissioner Day. Is there any comments from the public?
Hey, Mr. Backer, is this somebody uh, who bought it and licensed?
Yes. Yeah, people were growing through this group, okay? Alright, any other comments for the commissioners?
So they're gonna open an office here?
Nope, just working on a project.
Just one rule?
So far, one, possibly a couple.
We make money.
Sorry. Okay.
Alright, roll call vote.
Okay, uh, we are approving the LG Electrical Business License. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaka?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye. Okay, citizens' requests. Now, we have another time to talk. We all talked out Cory. All talked out. Can't think of anything. Didn't know I could come and wish this.
Pretty request, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, a citizen's request. Okay, commissioners minute, um, well, from Robertson, this was where I was gonna have him, you know, at the floor, but do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I don't have anything else to add.
Commissioner Hewitt, do you have anything to say?
Um, yeah, I kind of was doing my emails, which are the only ones that I can attest, but anyway. Um, and the bird cumber situation is going forward. I, like I say, that, that's the first time you knew about it. I mean, it, it, as far as what was transpiring.
Oh, the emails?
Yeah. I mean, it is, I mean, I mean, I know we were working on it, but as far as, as how it's progressed or anything.
Uh, we continue to work with the developer, is that what you're referring to? Or the cleanup or future plan for the trail stuff?
No.
The development?
Big Spring Creek? Is it about Big Spring Creek?
No.
Okay, so it's bird.
The development.
Yeah, it's bird.
And so we continue to provide them information. They're looking for traffic studies for Joyland Road and are working with their engineers, I believe, at this time as far as utility sizes and things like that.
Now, I guess it's the same group that is doing the ones up in by the hospital, right?
No, no.
This is the other room?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Rubes?
Well, I visited with Ed Dur, this is a sponsor meeting from two weeks ago and what he is gonna do is um, make a list of the places where their branches are overhanging and you know, get with the police department dispatch, follow the appropriate channels. Instead of trying to read them all off to her, he said, I know what you're busy, he's just gonna give her a copy of it to give, uh, to Mr. Dearhoff. This is what he was gonna do.
Thank you. Well, you have, so if you're.
That's it.
You're happy with it?
Sure.
This is great.
I'm good.
Commissioner Speaka?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just want, again on record, call forty seven. And um, also, we talked about seeing the findings of the audit.
I'll get that out. Again, I had intended on sending out an email today, but my day got gobbled up, so.
Keep it at the top of the list.
Yep.
And Holly, um, as far as David Hughes, been working with them, gotten them everything?
Yep, so we received another letter, uh, just before I left on vacation and so we have some uh, information that needs to be responded to by the seventh of October. So I'm working on gathering that information and I can get you copies of the letters as well as the responses, they're kind of developing, so.
Alright, is there anything else for the good of the order? We, uh, chair.
So what was the problem?
I go, would you be done this call someone with you?
You gotta treat me at one o'clock on Wednesday?
I have no.